Good evening. I'm gonna open up the State of Memphis Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barb, would you take roll call?
I don't have a list.
A list.
Give me a list.
Here Barb.
Thank you Eric.
Oh, it's the person taking votes, oh, okay. Okay, Booster?
Here.
Garber, here. Henley?
Here.
Mazur?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Yes?
Yes.
Oh, here he is. Schneider?
Here.
That's it.
All present in conference? Motion to accept roll call?
Are we, just yet, are we short one person?
Yes.
Yes, okay, it needs to be reflected in the...
Are we, who are we short?
I, I, it's an open...
Well, he's not on the board anymore. He's on the Planning Commission now, so we're, he won't be appointed until the next council meeting.
He's officially resigned? I was told by the clerk that he is not, that we don't have a resignation since he's not here.
Ken, is that him?
I don't know.
He's here.
He's actually here in the audience. Where is he? Somewhere.
He's over there. Ken.
Oh, there he is.
Is he, is he not participating? I don't, I don't know the...
I think he was told not to participate, right Ken? Because he's on...
Multiple boards.
Right.
So that makes us 100 percent.
So we have an open position, correct?
Yeah, that's what it, I'm not familiar with the background of that, but...
Neither am I.
And I don't know whether there's been a resignation. I know there's six, it may be six of six, it may be six of seven. I don't, I don't know, I don't have the details on it. I want the minutes to reflect though that, that...
There's a vacancy?
There's a vacancy.
There's either vacancy or vacancy.
Donna told me yesterday until they had a resignation that he was still on the board, so I don't know.
What information? Who is the name of the...
It's a conflict.
Counsel for the city.
Well, we'll make note that...
Well, I'll make note.
...it is a vacancy current because he's serving in other roles and, uh, he's not here. All in favor of accepting this roll call?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, accepted. Okay, see, adoption amendment of agenda. I would like to add, in new business, we'll label it number three, I'd like to know the status of the stop work order. Can someone make a notion, a motion?
You have to make a motion to add to amendment...
I'll make that motion.
Make a motion to add?
I'll make the motion.
To new business?
Okay, status of work order, stop...
Of the stop work order, yes.
And Eric, you made that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All is in favor?
Aye.
The motion, all...
Aye.
Okay, ayes and ares.
We need to make a correction to the public hearing address for said property. It's on here as 803-85 and the correct address is 803-75 on our, on this, on the public hearing. It's incorrect down here.
Oh.
Needs to be corrected. It should be 803-75.
It's right on all the...
It's right on all the other papers except the public hearing.
Okay, on the public notice. Do we change it, make note of it?
Oh, 803-85 it says.
The address is wrong on, on our notice here, but it's correct on all the other paperwork, so we are gonna note that.
Do we have to make a motion to change that, or it's kinda late now, right?
No, it's, let's make a motion to change it, that way it's in the, in the minutes.
Who's, your...
I'd make a motion that we change, we correct the address on the public hearings from 803-85 to...
I second that motion.
803-75. What's the correct number?
It's, um, 803-75 is the correct number?
Right.
803-75 is the correct number?
Is it? Yeah. It's per the address.
You good? All right.
Okay.
All right.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Correction, all opposed? Okay, passes. Okay, citizens' comments regarding agenda or non-agenda of this item. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to say at this time? I recognize Steve Weaver.
That's what these are.
Just to be clear, is this the public hearing or the citizen's comments?
Citizens' comments.
There will be a public hearing concerning the agenda items, correct?
Oh, correct.
Steven?
Yeah, before we get started, I'm just curious, why are we gonna do over on this? Maybe the reason will be more clear as the meeting goes on, and when we come to the appropriate part of the meeting for the public comment, I, I will be making the same comments I made the last time, our last November 7th meeting, and also the same comments I shared with the city council as resulted that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Steven. Any other comments from the citizens?
I have a question. Why was there a stop order put in?
We'll get to that.
We'll get to that.
And I'd like to ask a question too. Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yes, you are, Hod.
Okay. I read these papers over, and if I understand it right, Toy... We got two variances here, okay? When Toy bought the property, he went to the city council and got a variance. I question whether the city has a right to a grant of variance without the zoning board of appeal.
No variance was granted, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
They're, they're asking for a variance.
No variance was?
No variance was granted by the city.
Really?
The council cannot grant a variance, only this board can.
Yeah, all good.
Okay.
All right.
And at the end of the meeting, there's commissioners' comments for you to speak and say whatever you want, just so you know. That's the last thing on the agenda.
Okay.
Hod's hard of hea, hard of hearing, I'm not shouting at him.
Projecting.
But it's better if everybody, I'm way off on anything, but by what I understand, one of these, we're having this meeting.
She's not supposed to be talking.
If, pardon me, if you're gonna speak, can you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And just stand up.
We're just, let's, let's get on with the meeting.
Yeah.
No, I wasn't sure anything to say.
We will get to that, we'll get to that.
That we can't hear.
Well, I can't do anything about that.
Is there a mic?
We don't have a mic.
Right.
We'll project the best we can.
That's fine, honey.
All right.
All I was saying is trying to project more for...
All right.
Move up closer, move up closer.
Come on, lady.
Yeah, come on up here.
I'm not the only one, is all I'm saying.
I know.
Okay.
I know, I can't hear much either, so...
All right, approval of regular meeting minutes from November 7th. It says 12th is when they're accepted, but November 7th. I would like to add to the minutes, we'll put this down, this is a correction because both the zoning variance, the first time around was denied, and the second, the stop work order was upheld. I want that written in our notes.
I believe this is the minutes for the meeting...
From...
That we adopted the minutes.
From last...
This is not...
I didn't see it in the mi...
Not from November.
This, well, it says November 7th, December 12th.
No, it says approval of regular meeting minutes from December 12th. That's the meeting that we had at city, at the city hall.
Okay, I wasn't a part of that. I'm, I'm going by this only board meeting.
All we did at the meeting was approve the minutes.
You were there because it says you were there, right here. This is the, this is, the December 12th minutes are only to approve what happened in November. This is not to discuss what we decide.
Mrs. Henley, was that my wife?
I, I know.
I don't recall that, Eric. Was that my wife at the, not planning, that was for zoning?
Yeah, this is CBA meeting.
All right.
Um, I don't think Hod was there.
No, I wasn't there.
And, um, Mr. Brewster was, oh, was late.
It says Powers and Brewster were absent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are the minutes that we're approving.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Alls in favor?
I need your support.
We don't have a motion, or did you make a...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
Okay, all opposed? Hmm? Okay, it goes. Under communications, I would, I have not been, I've received no communications via email.
Well, we, we got some today.
But we did get some today, so...
So, can I?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, can I speak?
Yes.
So we received two communications from concerned citizens.
Yes.
Uh, the first person's name is Kerry Burke, Mrs. Kerry Burke, and the second person's name is Ashley Williams. I would just like to have these included into the minutes and on the record.
Agreed, I have those also. Um, I do not have Kerry, but I do have Ashley.
You have them both. One's handwritten.
Will be entered.
I'll make a motion to have those put into the record.
I second that motion, it will be added.
Yeah, I wanna let them read them, so...
Shall I read, shall I read this, shall I read them out loud?
No, you don't need to, um, I'm providing the counsel for choice.
Okay, unfinished business is none, it would be the new business.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Do we have any unfinished business? No.
No, so we're on to the new business. Okay, under the new business, public hearing, variance to chapter 150 zoning.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Support.
Yep. Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is in decline? Opposed, okay, open it. And the second would be the meeting, set meeting date to approve public hearing minutes.
We have the public hearing.
Let's, let's have the public hearing first.
Public input.
All right. So we are gonna need comments.
All the speakers want to talk.
Okay. We're gonna have comments from the citizens. Can I have...
Counsel or pardon, CBA?
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'd like to provide, I did this last time, just a brief summary so that the public is aware of what's going on, the issue. Counsel for choice is here, the applicant, they'll correct me if I state anything wrong or if they disagree with anything, but I think it's important that everybody understands why we're here again. We, we had a similar meeting upon this, well, first of all, there's two, two requests before the board. One is to appeal a stop work order with respect to the property that was issued by the building inspector, that's one request. And the second request is for variance with respect to the property, two separate issues. We, we had this public hearing before, the ZBA voted to deny those variances, but frankly, we don't, we did not have a very good record. And when I say record, I'm not necessarily talking about an audio recording, although that can be helpful. I'm talking about we didn't have detailed minutes detailing why, what was said in the public and detailing why the votes on those two issues were made, what the reason to work. Toy's appealed, and we went to a judge in Macomb County in the circuit court, and the judge said what I just told you, I don't have good enough minutes to be able to determine whether the ZBA's decision was appropriate under the law. So she sent it back here for further proceedings. The ZBA is not bound to make the same decision that they did, it can make the same decision, it can make a different decision, it can, it can do whatever it wants, we just need a good record here. So with respect to the variances, there are considerations provided for, and I'm talking about in particular the use variance, where they're asking that it be allowed a residential R and use. There's various of certain, excuse me, I'm getting a little sick, there's certain factors that the ordinance requires the ZBA to consider. And one of those is whether the property can, if the property cannot be reasonably used for the purposes permitted in a zoning district, the circumstances giving rise to the variance request are unique to the property and not general of the neighborhood itself. The use authorized by the variance will not alter the essential character of the area, and the applicant's problem leading to the variance request does not self-create. Those are the four factors in the ordinance that you have to consider when granting or denying a request. Additionally, the ordinance provides that you consider the following, and I can read these again, so that we have a fresh set about it when, after the public hearing, but I want everybody to understand these now. The location and size of the use, the nature and intensity of the operations involved in or conducted in connection with the use, size layout in relation to pedestrian and vehi, vehicular traffic to and from the use, the assembly of persons and connections with the use will not be hazardous to the neighborhood or be incongruence, incongruent therewith or conflict with normal traffic of the neighborhood. Taking into account among other things convenient routes of pedestrian traffic, particularly of children, vehicular attorney movements in relation to routes of traffic law, relation to street intersections, site distance, general character and intensity of development of the neighborhood, the location, height of buildings, the location, nature and height of walls, fences, and the nature and extent of landscaping of the site shall be such that the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings or impair the value thereof. The nature, location, size and layout of the uses shall be such, they'll be harmonious part of the district in which it is situated, taking into account among other things prevailing shopping habits, convenience of access by prospective patrons, physical and economic relationship of one type of use to another, related characteristics. Location, size and intensity and site layout of the use shall be such that its operations will not be objectionable to nearby dwellings by reason of noise, fumes, flash or flash lights could raise an ingredient as normal with respect to the proximity of commercial residential uses, nor interfere with the adequate supply of light air, nor inc, light and air, nor increase the danger of fire. These are, are factors that are to be considered, and these are factors candidly that should be discussed amongst the board when a vote is made, one way or another. I don't get a vote, I don't have a skin in the game, I don't care what your vote is, I just wanna make sure that we have a record confirming what your vote is and why you made it. So I can cover those things again, I talked to counsel for the applicant, they'd ask to present at the close of the public hearing, and, and they're gonna have the ability to do that, it gives them the opportunity to respond to any comments that are made during the public hearing. And, and I got a little ahead of myself, there's actually two issues, right? So the, what I just talked about was the variance request for the use. The other issue is an appeal of the building inspector's decision to issue a stop work order, so under your ordinance, this board has authority to review and allege error in order, and error in any order requirement, permit, decision or refusal made by the building inspector, the ZBA has to consider whether the building inspector applied proper ordnance standards enacted within the scope of his authority when making that decision on that appeal. There is a two-thirds vote requirement in order to grant the variance, so keep that in mind, and I'll be happy to circle back around again and talk, and I'm sure counsel for the applicants will tell you their take on these factors, but just wanted everybody to understand that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So the proposed zoning would be a migrant labor camp, correct?
Residential, multifamily residential, I believe is the variance request. Proposed use, I, I'll let Toy's to speak with the use.
So that's considered a commercial property then, right?
Right now, it's a commercial, it's a commercial overlay district where commercial uses are allowed, and it's, the underlying zoning is a single family, I think it's R 1B.
It would be taxed the same way as a, as a commercial, like an apartment complex, right?
I don't know how, how this would end up being assessed. I mean, I, it doesn't, I don't know how the assessor would, would handle that if the variance were right.
Thank you, Counsel Francis.
Also, not a factor.
Yep.
To consider.
It's not, it's being considered. Thank you, Mr. Francis.
It is personally going commercial though.
It's residential one, commercial one?
It's commercial overlay, which means you can have commercial uses, the underlying zoning is a single family, or it's R, R 1B.
Has it always been residential? I'm sorry, is it always been residential, any commercial?
Uh, there was a change in...
No, it was commercial when it was a funeral home.
When did it get to that residential zone or living?
It's called, it's called...
No, I don't think it's, it's not called...
It's called order, I can call on, if you may, I'll call on Steve Weaver because Steve Weaver was active planning commissioner at that time, and he can give us information on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is the code violations that I presented at the November 7th, the last CBA meeting we had, and I also provided a copy of this to our counsel, our following meeting in December so that they were in the information loop for what was going on with this. Number one, the zoning variance to allow operations of a labor camp, seasonal migrant worker housing on Main Street Zone C1 commercial overlay district was denied. Two, overturning the stop work order issued by the Memphis Building Inspector, Mr. McNutt. That was denied. Mr. McNutt stated at that meeting that they started without a permit, people were living in the construction zone approximately eight, this is in the spring of '22. The property has always been zoned R1 since it was built. One room had 27 cops and the rooms were not safe for occupancy, and upon that, he issued a stop work order. After all the parties spoke at that previous CBA meeting, both motions were presented, one to create the zoning of variance, that was denied, and two to reverse the stop work order at 8385 Main Street, if I have the address correct, that was also denied by unanimous vote.
I have a question before you go any further. Mel, is that accurate?
No.
It's, I, I'm not sure what you're reading from, so a permit was issued...
That wouldn't be what I took from the meeting.
Okay, a permit was issued, okay? When it was discovered that the zoning did not go with having multiple people in the building because it was commercial building, it was a funeral home, commercial building on Main Street. Back in 2015 or whenever it was, the planning commission put together the, whatever it's called, where they wanted to get rid of multifamily residences on Main Street and switch it to a commercial overlay. That way, instead of having, the big old houses broken up to have multiple apartments, that they would either be an office building or a professional building, or it could be someone's single, single family home. That's how I read it. I, I'm not sure, what happened is that when Mel came on board from Jeff Kern who got sick, when he found out there was a question about the zoning, and he looked at the paperwork, which he felt was incomplete, that's when the stop work order happened. Just to be clear, am I right?
Yes. Also, the reason I was sent out there is because of rumors that there was people living in there night under construction, and at the time, Mr. Kern had sent them a letter stating that they were in violation of not having adequate information in the zoning, so they were to stop, and the construction was still going on to the point where he went out there...
Yeah, we actually went there.
We went there, we, we were supposed to meet somebody from Mr. Toy's attorney there that day, you were there, and he canceled on us, he stood around outside for a long time, finally asked the carpenter if he was there, if he could, if he didn't mind walking us through and show us where it looked like. We went through there. The, the 27 units, you know, I didn't know it was worth them till later on when they actually gave us sealed drawings. We didn't have sealed commercial drawings, we're commercial property. We had someone that somebody could sit down and sketch themselves, a floor pan, a patient who just wasn't for it with a bathroom for it. We didn't have enough detail. Our electrical inspector was the one that noticed that, and he said, "I'm not going to do this until we get some architectural, uh, electrical drawings."
I didn't mean to put words in your mouth, you know, but that, that was what I, that's what I ascertained from your testimony last night.
Once, once I, they applied for it with the new drawings, then you could see that there was room for 27, and one room 16 or 14 in another, there's a total of 60, I know they're not asking for that right now, but there could be completed up to 60.
Actually, the number's 94 because I played the documents from the agriculture department that, that issued those, those, uh, the ability, the prints and so forth, that, which says at the bottom of every one of those, by the way, this is not permission to go ahead with it. But, so there's 94 altogether, and I have those documents.
No, but I, I observed, we observed probably about six or eight cops and people was actively sleeping there, right?
I don't remember exactly, but it was, I was surprised.
There was that one, two rows upstairs.
I was surprised, yeah.
And there was the newest dressers and their furniture and all the things, and they were in amongst those two by fours that were construction, and they were off working somewhere.
And there was also beds on the main floor in the, what I would call the, the funeral room where people would be laid out. I, I don't know how many there were, but there was quite a few. I, I'm, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, I was just trying to say you were wrong, but I wanted to...
No, I'm fine with it. We're here to discuss it.
I didn't even know there was 27 for each group until we got the, the, you know, the engineered drawings, and then I'm there and gave the occupancy room for each group.
Right, so be that as it may, we, we did, did have a stop order, work order issued at that point. So my argument as a planning chair, as this, this came up in front of the planning commission, I'm opposed to variances, period. It subverts our zoning code here or anywhere else, it backdoors special use, thereby it goes around the planning commission, it sets bad precedents, continuing and aggravating the very problem which Eric just alluded to, that we had a lot of mixed use in this area. The reason that we put that C1 in there was to begin to curtail that and correct that. I mean, why even have a zoning code that's not gonna be followed? Zoning descriptions adherence to the same is the proper legal course to maintain. If we keep making exceptions, why even bother having it? It defeats that code, it defeats our master plan, it defeats the purpose of establishing it in the first place. Clearly, the use of the funeral home as occupied was not in sync with the central business district overlay C1. C1 allows for options, and those are listed in our Memphis city code. They are, you can have businesses, you can, you can do a lot of different things in there, you can look them up if you choose. However, you gotta have a certificate of occupancy, and that's one thing I'm not familiar with, and I've never seen I asked for at the last meeting. You need permits and inspections for building alterations or change of use. Review of this information determines compatibility, building and use in the C1 commercial overlay district. Now, at that meeting, I cited 150.003, it plainly states non-conformities can continue until the remove, but revival's not encouraged because some people have the idea that this non-conformity was at play. Further, 150.003 plainly states non-conformity shall not be enlarged, expanded or extended. Any activity in C1 of this nature as a general practice are prohibited. The applicants did not present any documents at the hearing to affirm a certificate of occupancy for a non-conforming building, and I invite you to give that to us when you The applicants did not present any documents at the hearing to affirm a certificate of occupancy for a nonconforming building, and I invite you to give that to us when you speak at the end of the meeting. Certificate of occupancy is required, section 150.027, and it would be on file. Section 150.027 states, quote, "Owner failing to produce, such documents shall create a presumptive conclusion that such nonconformant use did not exist prior to the acquisition of the property," which it did not. It was a funeral home, always was. Including my presentation to ZBA, I cited our code, section 150.028 D3C. Arguments from an applicant claiming a variance due to the result of personal or economic hardship, or any result from the actions from that, on the impacting of the properties and the essential character neighborhood are not to be considered by the ZBA, that has no bearing on the decision you're making here. Even if positive benefits were accrued, they spend more money at the dollar store or whatever, that is not part of what we're looking at, we're looking at zoning law here tonight. In short, the section states economic detriment to the applicant is not to be considered, no adverse impact on the surrounding properties are acceptable. That's three codes. It's a Title 15 of land use and zoning in the Memphis city code. The ZBA thoughtfully considered all of these three sectors in our code. They asked many questions of the meeting's participants, their deliberations took place in public, their decision six oh to reject the applicants for rezoning and to uphold the stop work order. The above scenario needs to be considered in light of the former Elias assisted living adult foster care home, because that needs to be addressed now also. Not at this meeting, but that is in play. It should be an agenda vitamin as we continue on this road. Clearly, unless I'm mistaken, this property is a noncompliance in violation of city ordinances. It should be inspected by our building inspector, again, to get current assessment and review and course of action determined. Now, hopefully, we can get together and work this out, but these things should take place. And in summarizing this, there was never a change of use documented. We have a transient population that is coming and going, unvetted. We have loss of neighborhood cohesion. We have younger kids at risk. No certificate of occupancy was ever issued. It will drop housing values, and Toitz rep stated, "We made a mistake in that last meeting." Go back on the tapes, you can find it. This venture is detrimental to the small-town use. We've got one square mile here, and the plaintiff cannot use hardship to advance their claim, it is self-created. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. McNutt. You, you were speaking, but would you like to say anything?
Well, I didn't know, last time I spoke later on, is that right?
You can speak now, I'm, I recognize you.
In regards to that, uh, my thoughts haven't changed, I felt when I was asked to go out there, that, uh, I wanted to find out if they were living there, for one thing. They had already been sent a letter stating that they're in violation of, of our zoning, and that they could not continue any construction until they gave us the proper documents. And they had not done so, what they were doing worked. So, I went out there and introduced myself, and Eric and I, and, uh, led through and walked through, and, uh, there's, there's a lot of things that need to be corrected. They've given us, uh, some architectural drawings, and I have them, but I have not spent time on, because I'm not wasting my time to do a plan review on something that doesn't pass zoning. Zoning gets approved, if it, if it gets changed, I will then let, you know, take and look at their application for, for that permit, and we'll do a, you know, a plan re-apply. But until then, that's basically where I'm at with this. And, uh, I still feel that it's, uh, it's an art district, but not when you take it to multiple, often multiple people in there of that nature. I mean, uh, you have that many in that smaller area, you know, it's not one or two families or townhouses even, but the multiple things, but it's very important, you know, very important.
So, we're here to determine, thank you very much, sir. Under Michigan state law, it says certificate of occupancy is issued as regarded by the Michigan building code, where a building permit has been issued and completed in compliance with the current codes, which would be Memphis. None of that's been fulfilled.
Right, with the, you know, the local zoning regulations of Memphis also, which is.
Thank you, sir. Sally Morgan.
Can you just, Sally?
Sally, stand up and give us.
Come up, come up, come up.
Closer, please.
Come up here. So, you can be heard, and you're addressing the board.
So, um, I feel the zone communities have laws that everyone, including businesses, need to follow. The purpose of an ordinance is to have a master plan that, that will work for our city. In order to request a variance change, one needs to prove hardship. Mr. Toit can approve a hardship. His purchase of all three properties and the money he has spent was his own doing. He failed to get their approval for a name change prior to purchase. If the zoning is changed to a seasonal agricultural boarding house labor camp, then it will stay with this property forever and stay with the deed. The ordinance was put in place, now that they're saying it was 2015. Zoning board needs to look at the complete picture, because there are two other addresses that are in violation of the city zoning as well. All three properties were purchased knowing they were not zoned for boarding house labor camps. There are specific locations designated for this, and Main Street is not one of them. The situation has cost the city taxpayers money for our lawyer, the time spent with the zoning commission and the city council. Get that, so. I also feel that the conditions, even though they are the other property, since they're all under the same boarding camp labor, or boarding house labor camp use right now, you know, front window is duct taped, uh, there's broken furniture strewn throughout the property.
Sally? We're here to talk about one specific piece of property, which is the old funeral home.
We understand your concerns, and we'll, you can talk later.
Well, okay, so, you know, I, I, I feel that we do have to eventually look at the whole picture here, um, in regards to that, so. I know I don't feel comfortable living, um, in close proximity to, uh, the situation. I don't feel safe, I don't feel comfortable, I, I don't like what's going on. I don't think it's right that he's able to just think he can come in and do what he wants, and then continue to do it. And I think that we have a zoning board that has spent many hours and a lot of time trying to get our city back on plane, and, you know, we need to comply with that. We don't need this situation on Main Street. I don't think that's going to help with trying to bring in, you know, family members into our community, which is what we really would like to see, and the overall effect is going to be negative.
Thank you, Sally. I appreciate your input. Mary Manos.
Right here.
What would you like to say?
I'm going to pass, because it's not the right time.
All right, I'll call you back afterwards. Mark Blazak. Pardon me?
I'm on my way to.
Yes, sir.
Wait, wait. What are you waiting for? This is, this is the, this is the public hearing. If you want to speak, now's the time to speak. There's no, there's no speaking after this.
Really?
Not here, not in this meeting.
Okay, well, then I'll go back and I'll take my turn.
Fine, Mary, I recognize Mary.
I, I didn't, I didn't understand what you said, I thought you said you passed.
I did pass.
Okay. I know when we spoke earlier, you, you said you weren't sure.
Okay, my name's Mary Manino.
Oh, Mary.
And I have a concern that if Mr. Toit wants to house his people, why don't he build on his property or his city? Why does he gotta come this way, sir? The attorney?
You're addressing the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a funeral home up on Main Street on Precep that's been vacant. Why don't Mr. Toit look within his own city to find housing for his people? That's my concern, why does he gotta come this way? We, a lot of people don't want to see that on Main Street, so that was my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mark, I recognize Mark.
State your name, full name.
My name's Mark Blazak.
Blazak.
Where do you live?
81630 Valerio Road.
Keep talking to him.
You have it written down.
Well, I'm here to support, in favor of the, I'm here to support what our citizens are concerned of. I think the zoning board should really highly consider the, all the other folks that have already made commitments and purchased their homes and moved into a city, made investments into a city based on their certain conditions, and I don't think it's very fair to just allow variances and ordinances that affect these people in such a personal manner. And that's, um, some of the board, I think, I'm sure has, and really also needs to consider them, that these citizens have already made large investments, they've been part of this community, they, uh, there was a plan, they bought into the plan, and then changed the plan right around them is very unfair, very unfair to them. You know, let alone, um, unvetted individuals in our small town. We all have children, and all have family here, uh, maybe everything goes great, but, and when it doesn't, um, you know, it could be a bad day. But mostly, I think the zoning boards should really consider everybody that already bought into the city plan, everybody that made investments in this community and this town, and needs to support them too. I stick to the plan.
Thank you, Mark. Lynn Pelzer? You are going to pass. Doug Pelzer?
Come up here.
I don't, who, who is?
I live at 34846 Saban, and really, I'm just going to kind of reiterate, but, uh.
Speak to the board, sir, address the board, just so she can hear you.
Yeah.
And I don't really have anything new to add, but what I'd like to state is I, I, I back, uh, Steve Weaver, uh, what he said 100% in this gentleman, uh.
Mark Blazak.
Mark Blazak, uh, 100%. I don't have anything new to add, except for I support exactly what they, they've said.
Thank you for being here. Okay. James Berger.
Goodness, sir.
James Berger.
Name's James Berger, 11534 Smith Creek Road.
Thanks, James.
I'm looking at this from a, lawyer told us all the things that we shouldn't be addressing and that we shouldn't be taking into consideration. As someone with a building background that works in residential, commercial, different construction aspects, we're talking about, what is it, potentially 94 people?
On the documents from the statement I received, yes.
Okay, we're in 6,000 square feet. So, what are our sanitary considerations to put 94 people in 6,000 square feet? You're looking at 60 square foot per person? Are we housing inmates, are we housing animals, or are we housing workers? I don't understand how we're building this thing on Main Street, and now we're going to take in basically 10% of the population of our town with 100 people? And we're going to just say, here, they're all going to be right here, not sure how they're going to live, not sure what the conditions are, not sure if it's going to be building codes, not sure how it's going to affect the neighborhoods or anything else, but let's just go ahead and do this? Does this seem right?
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Dave McClern?
Yeah, it's my understanding that, uh.
State your name.
Michigan regulation.
Where do you live?
Lordman Road, 37747.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Lordman Road, 37747.
Dave McClern, thank you.
Okay, uh, my understanding by state regulation, every person in one of these agricultural, uh, labor camps is supposed to be 500 people, 500 square foot. Like Mel was saying over here, I was trying to do the math myself, 94 people, I didn't know the square footage of the building, but I figured I've seen the building, and I know I'm familiar with the funeral home, and that ain't that big of a building, 94 people.
One quick note, there are.
No, sir, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Come, come, yeah, it's come to order, sorry.
But, you know, it may, you know, have a basement or whatnot, but still, that's a tight little area. And also, I like, I wonder, who actually is, who does do this? I know you have counsel here, who they represent? Who, who actually are the people that are, are involved in the ownership of this complex?
Counsel for Toitz, can you tell who you represent?
They're going to address after everyone's done talking.
I need to know exactly who they represent, that's what I'm asking.
Patrick.
Yeah.
This is this man's opportunity to speak?
Yes.
It's not his opportunity to ask questions and for him to, us to answer. He has a certain amount of time to say what he wants to say.
All right, we'll get your answer for you, though.
The other issue is, uh, eventually, what you're going to have in this building is, you've got 94 people, this ain't going to all be men and women, this could be men, women, and children. And them children are going to end up in the school system. And we're all going to pay for that, okay? Including the M L A city, you not only pay for that, but you gotta pay for the person that has to teach them English. You're going to have to hire a whole new set of people just to teach them math, okay? And you're going to foot the bill for them being in the school.
Okay, I understand, this is simply about the code right now. Any other aspect would be down the road, Dave, but we are talking about variance and a stop work order, that's what we have to address, the law of code right now, but I understand your concern.
The way I was kind of understanding with this gentleman, so, here it is, these people progressed, and they didn't even care about your concern.
No, they did.
They're in here working on this building, they didn't give a damn about what your ordinance said. They didn't care about what the people, the people's law said.
That's what we're trying to establish that.
They went against that law, the will of the people, the democracy, that they, they want to use and abuse now, but they took that and ignored it and walked right over it. I can't say nothing more, so I guess I.
Thank you, Dave. Does anyone else wish to speak? What is your name, sir?
My name's John Terris.
Did he fill out a paper?
Yes, he filled out a paper.
I, nobody gave me a paper to fill out?
The papers are at the door when you came in.
It's at the door.
Okay.
All right, fill out the paper, we will wait for you. Time's on, Dave, we're going to have a time to speak afterwards.
No, there's no time to speak afterwards. There's discussion among the board.
Can he have time to speak?
After the meeting, he can talk all he wants.
So, he's done?
He's done. This is a public hearing, this is how it works.
Thank you.
Others will be here all night.
I'll pick it up. John.
Thank you. John. John, okay. All right, I recognize John. Tulkus, would you please state your name and your address?
Okay, my name is John Terris, and I'll stand here so she can hear me, and I don't need you to move over here. I've been a resident of this city for 24 years. I moved out here because it's a small-town feel, like the sign says, a good place to live. That's been changing over the past few years. We talked about the zoning for this building, it was commercial only, and it changed in 2013, is what I heard.
Address the board, sir, so she can hear you.
I'm, I'm sure she can hear me just fine, standing right next to it. So, it was changed in 2013, and it was owner occupied, he was the user of the commercial building, and he lived there. So, I don't see any need to change it now to be a multifamily, uh, what is it being called?
Labor camp.
A labor.
Labor, a boarding house.
That's not what we need in our community, it's right on Main Street. I made an investment in this town, like many people did. If you own a home here, you've made an investment, and what brings that investment up in value? And what brings that investment up in value is the desire for people to move here. And when people are driving through our town, we've got two mistakes already that we see, and banners that are not appealing, that make people say, I don't want to live here. We need something appealing that makes people want to come live here. I think that needs to remain a commercial business and get rid of the residential completely, so there isn't a more residential occupant than that. It should be a commercial, if they want to do something, why don't they open up a flower shop? Okay, so let's move it back to commercials, let's get our town back to where it is, so that this is a good place to live. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, John.
Petnado.
Petnado, okay, come on up, Eric, can you hear?
It's fine.
Go ahead, John.
Speak up, John.
I am speaking, it's not...
You can yell.
I have no problem with the zoning of multi-family, but I do have a big problem with the number of people. And that ought to be in the zoning, you can't put that many people in any place. I drove a tour bus for many, many years, we're talking more than two busloads of people in one little place. So, I suggest you pass some rules on square footage per person. Have to be very careful with that, but that would solve it. As far as who it is, they're just people looking to live.
Thank you, John. Patrick, can I speak to the audience for a minute? Yes, you may, Eric. So, I'm not sure, and one way or the other, doesn't, it doesn't matter as far as this goes for me, but who here has actually been upstairs in the building?
Which building?
The funeral home, the building we're talking about.
No.
Okay. So, just so you know, I, just so you know, you've actually been upstairs in the building?
One year.
Upstairs? Okay, so just so you know, people keep saying it's a little building, it's not a little building, it's a gigantic building on the inside, just, just so you know, this has nothing to do with how I'm gonna vote on this issue or whatever, it's not a small building. There is probably, I'm gonna guess, four thousand square feet up in the upstairs part of it, something like that, and there's a garage in the back that I'm pretty sure you could probably park six cars in. So, it's, it seems like a small, narrow building, but in reality, it's actually pretty big, and I've never been in the basement, so I don't know, I don't have any idea what that looks like. But I was really surprised when I went in there, how big it actually was. So, to say that putting a hundred people in this building or whatever, I don't know how that works out. Eric, I have to say this is irrelevant. How that fits, but just so you know, the building is not small.
Well, does anybody know how big this building is?
I'm gonna call it order, this is irrelevant, it's irrelevant, the size of the building, Barb, because we're discussing the two laws, not the size of the building, nothing else, we have a code, we have a law. Let's stay on course. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
That's okay, Barb.
Is anybody on the board know how many square feet that building is?
Six thousand. He does.
How many?
I can't, uh, no, it's six thousand five hundred square feet is what it's listed as.
Okay, that can be measured. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, what are we doing now?
Well, let's go to comments and, well, we're gonna take a vote on this.
We're gonna close the hearing, Toits gets to talk.
Okay.
You make sure that there's no other people in public now.
Well, nobody else has signed, so... Do you have a, did you sign a piece of paper with your name, and there we go, come on up.
My name is Scott Burke, eight oh six six one Union Street.
Thanks, Scott, recognize you?
My main concern is fire hazard overcrowding and the detrimental possibilities of factors in the area. There's no reason for this, it's just, it shouldn't be in the city limits, I don't understand what the point of this is, it should be out of city limits, and basically, that's my main concern. If there's gonna be ninety people in this place, ninety-three, I can't see it happening, it's gonna be overcrowded, it just, it don't make sense. That's my, that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Wally.
P. Cinda.
Yes.
Recognize you?
Wally P. Cinda, three four four eight oh Lordman Road. Parents basically, I'm second generation, inherited a home there. Parents were here for, they'd be over a hundred years old now, so I moved back, same thing, and I'm shocked that some of the things are going on in this city. Uh, the one thing is, I know zoning is zoning, and it sounds like a lot of things have been going around and around, amongst other things in this city, um, you know, I just retired and stuff from General Motors, but a lot of stuff going around back and forth, and zoning is zoning. And if things aren't, things aren't getting dotted and crossed and t's aren't t'd and stuff in here, and keep going back and forth, and we're going back to November, so this is the first I've heard of this. Now, I know a lot of stuff, I don't go online and stuff like that, but the first thing that comes to mind to me is parking. We're talking, we're here ninety people, I'm here ninety people, the first thing that comes to me would be parking. Where are you gonna park all the cars or vans, or, you know, no commercial vehicles, if it, you know, and stuff? I mean, that seems like with the thing, where, where's parking gonna be? And what are we gonna have to do there and that and stuff? So, I mean, my whole thing is, it seems like, I don't know, it's, it's not real professional, in my opinion, I guess, you know? And I feel for you guys and stuff, and with the council stuff going back and forth and stuff, where something gets there and then here and stuff, and, you know, I just, and from the whole city point and stuff, do we need that? No, I don't think so. And I, I think I voiced your opinion for a lot of people, unfortunately, I tried to get a couple more people here tonight and stuff, but, you know, they couldn't make it and stuff, and, uh, sorry they couldn't, but, uh, and I don't signal names, but, uh, you know, but good luck with you guys and stuff.
Thanks for your effort, Wally, appreciate it. Thank you. Counsel Francis, we're gonna...
I'm gonna ask if there's anybody else?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Has an opinion? Okay, no, we'll close that point. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
Support, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Uh, I think it'd be appropriate to give Toits their opportunity to speak.
All right. Counsel for Toits.
Good evening, my name is Adam Behrendt, I'm the attorney for Toits.
Would you come right up here? Yeah, need to hear you.
My name is Adam Behrendt, spelled B-E-H-R-E-N-D-T, I'm the attorney for Toits. My business address is nineteen oh one Saint Antoine, sixth floor in Ford Field, Detroit, Michigan, four eight eight two six. I want to correct a couple of things that I've heard today. Uh, number one, the state of Michigan issued a agricultural migrant labor housing order, not a, not a labor camp for thirty people for this structure. Not ninety, not ninety-six, thirty, looking at the document right here.
Just thirty?
Thirty.
Got more than that in there, but...
This is Toits' opportunity to speak.
Mr. Parent, speak.
The point is that, that's, so this is all premissed on a misunderstanding of there being ninety people allowed in the structure. The structure exceeds sixty-five hundred square feet. Secondly, I've heard people say they don't like variances. Unfortunately, variances are required by law to be reviewed. Municipality, a, a home rule city such as the city of Memphis must have a use and non-use variance standard. And you have one, and the standards were set forth by your council, I agree with those standards as they were represented to you. Fortunately, I haven't heard anything yet from, from comment regarding those standards. Here, there are two issues at play, number one, the stop work order. We were issued a work order by Mr. Kern in October of two thousand twenty-one, we passed inspections, the work continued, we spent nearly seventy thousand dollars on that work. That structure now is unfinished on the internal, and that should be allowed to be completed. Whether or not you grant the use variance or not, we should be permitted to finish the structure. There's no reason why that has to stand still. I felt to Mr. McNutt yesterday that the allegation was there weren't sufficient drawings, there weren't drawings, there were so many. I've heard comments today that Mr. McNutt did also, he also found that people were living in the residence at the time. I don't know that to be the case or not, I don't doubt Mr. McNutt's statement, but there was no citation issued for that. I'm not here to defend a citation of whether or not Toits properly had people in there or didn't have. What we're focused on is whether or not there should be a stop work order, and there shouldn't be. We passed inspections, the work will be done to code, there's simply no reason why the primary residential use that's, that's being outfitted in there, which are bathrooms and walls, flooring, should not be completed. Secondly, this notion that, um, the, the use is somehow inconsistent or inharmonious to the zoning area is not true. Again, this is not a labor camp, these are seasonal workers who come up here, some of them who have families, they contribute to the community, and, uh, the idea that there might be problems that come from that, I, I apologize, but I, I don't believe that's a factor we consider, and, and to be candid, it's not something that I ever heard of in zoning law. What we need to focus on is whether or not there is an undue hardship. We were told by the Realtor, we should sit on this board at the time, this was a permitted use. If you go to the city's own website, and someone made reference to this, and you look at the master plan, the master plan that's available shows this as multi-family.
You spoke to the Realtor? Hey, keep it down back there.
So...
You spoke to the Realtor and he told you that?
The Realtor represented to my client that this was a...
So, you didn't actually speak to him?
Sir, I'm an attorney, I don't, I'm not a witness to the case.
So, you're, what you're saying is not in evidence, you have no, actually no firsthand knowledge of it, right?
I was advised that it's curt, sir, I didn't have it recorded.
But you, you didn't actually hear it yourself?
Sir, am I allowed to speak or am I being cross-examined?
Well, no, I, I'm just wondering, because I heard what you said, and I happen to know the person, and I don't think you're correct.
Then, then, then he can come here and say that I'm not correct? Okay, but I'm telling you what I was told.
You, so you were told that the Realtor...
Yes, sir.
Said that this use was allowed?
Correct.
I think you're wrong. He's not an authority in the zoning board.
Not saying he is, but your zoning map is...
It says right in the, in the real estate book that it's up to the owner to verify what he's gonna use it for and that it's, it's allowed, right?
Sir, I'm not here to be examined, I'm here to...
No, I'm just saying, because I don't, I don't like, just like when I stepped in on Steve, because he was making a mistake. I'm telling you, you're making a mistake now too, because that's not true.
I'm not here to make mistakes, I'm not here to...
Eric, let's let counsel finish.
I'll send that position, and the vote...
I don't, I don't want you to, to come in here and say that this, this happened, because it didn't happen.
I disagree with you, sir, I understand by my...
Come to order, come to order, let's...
So, you didn't hear that firsthand, is that what you're saying?
Okay, it's in the notes, did not hear it firsthand, let's let him speak, go ahead, attorney, uh, counsel.
So, the, the point here is their own master plan identifies this as being a permitted use. We will, so this is not something caused by us, and we relied upon what the information provided to us, we believe this is a used consistent in the area, and we've asked the board to permit the variance. Again, two separate inquiries, whether the use variance be permitted, or what the stop work order should be lifted. We think we've met the standard on both, we rely upon our submissions as well to the panel, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, hold on, so, so just to be clear, you said that the Realtor used to sit on this board?
That's my understanding.
Right, so, who's the Realtor?
Sir, I don't know his name.
So, you don't know his name, but you know what he said to somebody else?
Yes, sir.
Who's the Realtor?
Josh Sephora.
Josh Sephora did not sit on this board, first, first of all. I don't know who that is, I, I, I was saying you were talking about somebody else, but as far as I know, Josh Sephora never sat on the Z B A.
Can I stand corrected?
Or, or on city council, for that matter, and, and any, and any, pardon me?
Is it on your website?
On my website? I don't have a website.
City's website?
I never heard of it.
I never heard of, I never heard of that person. I'm, I'm sorry, that's enough, I, I didn't mean, I didn't, look, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just want to make sure that what goes on the record is correct.
I'm making sure I get my record made, so that's why I'm making my...
All right, thank you, Ms. Behrendt. Well, the, um, this whole... He sold the funeral home?
J- Jason?
Yeah.
Yes.
It was Jason?
Jason's old, what did he say?
Well, the, the stop work order and the... Go ahead.
Just wait just a minute here. Do we, I, at this point, should we be determining who the Realtor was?
No.
No.
Doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter.
Then let's keep...
He represented that his client told him, the Realtor, that it was okay. Eric has disagreed.
Okay.
I'm gonna add that Mr. Toit wasn't forthcoming with the information or his intentional use of the buildings, the building, um, and that has caused his own hardship.
Oh, hold on, sir, there, there's no evidence on that whatsoever. Yes, submissions that we received back from the city as a part of this lawsuit, okay? We've seen these documents, said he was well aware of that, just simply saying that he, he wasn't forthcoming, there's no evidence. Your decision must be supported by competent material, substantial evidence on the record, not your speculation of what Mr. Toits may or may not have said.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay.
Okay, I think we have to take a vote?
Two votes.
Two votes, okay.
At this point, should we be speaking to giving our reasons?
Think that it would work best if someone made a motion, it's probably best to make a motion to approve one of the variances, and then discuss that particular variance with, and again, I can repeat what the, what the standards are, and then take a vote on that, pardon me, I keep saying variances, plural. One's a variance and one's appeal of the building's factor decision. Do those separately, discuss them separately, vote on them separately.
Correct, okay.
Okay. So, I propose, I'm gonna make a motion to approve or disapprove the variance. It's, it's almost done. All right, I wanna make a motion to approve or disapprove the number one.
Make a, make a motion to approve, and then you can vote yea or nay on the approved, I think that provides...
Make a motion to approve, and then you vote on the variance to chapter one fifty zoning.
Just to be clear, making the motion and seconding it doesn't mean you have to vote in favor or against the motion, it just puts it on the table.
So, are, we have a motion to approve the variance to chapter one fifty zoning, right?
Does anyone second that?
I'll second.
Okay, now, we vote?
Who's second?
Discuss.
I'd second it. You guys wanna have a discussion on this?
Yeah, we need to have a discussion. No, we can't do that, we, we can't meet separate, in private.
No, you have a discussion that we all hear.
We have to speak, we can't, no.
All right.
I'll go first.
Go ahead, Barb.
I'm happy to go first.
Please first.
The, the, the biggest thing that, first of all, I'm going to vote against approving the variance. So, I'm a no vote. The reason I'm a no vote, and has nothing to do with who's there, who's living there, it's pretty, it's pretty spelled out here, that this is what we need to, this, these are the factors that we need to look at. The property cannot reasonably be used for purposes permitted in its zoning district. In our meeting last year, we, we listed twenty alternatives to having, um, to having what, what Toits are asking for. There's many uses for this building. Um, the circumstances giving rise to the variance are unique to the property and not general conditions of the neighborhood. Once again, I don't, I don't see where that's appropriate, I don't think that... How am I seeing this? I'm not seeing this right. And not the general conditions of the neighborhood itself. The use authorized by the variance will not alter the essential character of the area. I, I'm not so sure about that one, I, I think it will alter the, I think it will alter it. The applicant's problem leading to the variance is not self-created. Well, from what I've heard over the last couple years, it was self-created. And I don't know what Realtor told anybody anything, it doesn't matter to me. It, what matters is the fact that perhaps this should have all been taken care of before the building was purchased and the work started. That's right. There's also another, uh, another point that you brought up, Steve, and I, it was the last point that you brought up, and I can't, we'll just let that go. But I, these four points here, to me, are, are validation that we don't have to, that we don't need to approve this variance. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Can I take a moment?
Go ahead, Eric.
So, um, I, I know that the planning company spent a lot of time putting together their...
master plan, and while it may not have been a complete and as fancy as, as some other communities that we had, that we have to compete with for, for different things like money from the state. But I know that Macomb County came in and we did the best job that we could, and the whole idea at the time was to create this commercial overlay on Main Street, so that instead of chopping up old houses and turning them into boarding houses, that they would be used for office space and professional buildings, or single-family homes. And that was the whole idea behind the master plan that we, we created back in whatever was, 2013 or 1415, I don't remember. I will be voting no, because to me, it's, it's spot zoning.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Booster?
Did you vote, Eric?
Nobody's voted, no.
Nobody's voted, yeah?
There's a motion on the table, but we have a call for a vote.
Looking at the specified situations, property cannot be reasonably used for the purposes permitted in the zoning. If it is not currently, or couldn't be currently brought up to house as many people as necessary, that is an issue to be determined by the zoning board itself, based off of the drawings and the blueprints that have not been fully reviewed. Giving a rise to the variance of the property is speculative, as long it is, for me, as well as not altering the characteristic of the area. Unsure how it would, bringing people in as a multi-dimensional or a multi-residential would alter the, the, the neighborhood itself. It is primarily all single-family dwellings. It is, was zoned as a single-family dwelling, as well as commercial. It's never been a multi-residential living space, and I don't believe it really should be as well, based off of what I've heard here tonight, based off of what I've been reading as the impact of the hardship to the, Mr. Toy. Hardship is discussed as suffering. I, I don't really see where the suffering is in this. The zoning and the planning commission have put an overlay on this. I really don't see where it needs to be changed.
I'm going to correct you one thing. It was multifamily, but that was changed in the code upon sale, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You were correct, no, you were correct. So, Hod.
Well, what Mr. Toy said, when he put this letter up to us, that he would have approximately 20 people living in there. And I've seen more than that sitting on the front porch last summer. I can't vote for it, because things just don't smell right to me. And there's something going on here that's bothering me, and so I can't, I can't, I can't vote for it.
I, I feel that there was not enough disclosure on the point of Mr. Toy, because he didn't do due diligence to find out what his property could be used for, per the code of Memphis. I'll use the word flying under the radar, hits me right in the face. And that's something I do see. So I don't feel, and I haven't, I haven't seen any improvement, just simply somebody wanting to get something they want. I don't feel good about what I've seen so far, so I can't vote for this.
Can I say something?
You can.
I can't understand why Mr. Toy would spend this kind of money to put 20 people in there. You see what I mean? That's what I mean with things just not smelling right. He's got bigger plans, or somebody has, somebody screwed up. It's got to be cleared up to me.
Mr. Rader?
I just feel that he didn't go about it right. I mean, he should have known, I mean, he should have, you know, he said he got the state license first. Did the state come in and actually check and see if it was, you know, I don't know how he could have got the state license. And I don't think it's right for our city either, but I don't know, I don't think it's
Anyone said? Counsel, we take our vote?
Do a roll call vote.
Okay, we do a roll call vote. Barb, you call names? This is for the variance to chapter 150 zoning. To approve it, is it yea or nay?
All right. Henley?
Nay.
Mazur?
Nay.
Powers?
Nay.
Speak up.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Okay. Schneider?
No.
Garber? No. And then we have an empty spot, so.
You got Brewster?
We have Brewster.
Brewster.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brewster.
Nay.
Oh, there you are.
So variance to chapter 150 zoning is unanimous, minus the one spot. Set meeting day to approve public, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I'm sorry.
Same process.
Same process, yes.
Can we bring Melo to discuss this part of it?
Or do you have to hear any comment?
I know, he's our building official.
I mean, I suppose if you have a question for him during this, this is fine, but I would-
Well, my, my question is this, if, if the, the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
If the, if the variance is not granted, then it doesn't fit the zoning, so how can we tell him to, to reverse the stop order?
You heard counsel for Toy say that there was no reason they should be allowed to finish the bathrooms and the flooring and that sort of thing, and I think that's the argument that they're making, is that these improvements could be made regardless of the zoning.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I wouldn't mind having Mr. McNutt come and talk with us, though. To reverse-
Come to you?
Mr. McNutt, would you-
I don't feel comfortable yet on voting on this.
Would you please come up to the table? Yeah, we need your counsel.
Yes.
The status of the stop work order simply because-
Speak up.
The status of the stop work order was because they were non-compliant, they had people occupying a space that was not, had, they had no C of O, correct?
Exactly.
It was not safe for their people to be in there at that time? And so you issued the, the stop work order?
Well, along with, in the Michigan Building Code, under rejection of permits.
Yes.
It's allowed, the building official has the authority to reject, or, what's the proper word I want to say?
Deny.
Deny of existing permit due to that, yeah. Here, here we go.
I've got one here, too.
That's right out of the code. Yeah, it's right out of the code.
There you go.
Okay, building, building official is authorized to suspend or revoke a permit issued under the provisions of the code wherein the permit is issued in error, or on, based on incorrect, inaccurate, or in incomplete information, in violation of any ordinance, regulation of any other provisions of the code.
That's, that-
A permit can be revoked for lack of information, or false information. You mentioned that you had inspections. You may have got a permit for the plumbing and other things. The electrical inspector went there, he blew the whistle. He said, I want to see documents.
Let's just have a vote. We've already had the, I think you had a question, the clarification.
And I have one thing else to say. We were all here last time.
It's already, I'm not interested in money and the laws.
Thank you, Mr. McNutt. All right.
We were all here last time, that's for us.
We will have comments afterwards, and we can talk it up. Okay, we're going to have a vote on the-
Somebody needs to make a motion.
All right, I make a motion to approve the stop work order.
The request in front of you is to reverse-
To reverse the stop work order, thank you. To reverse the stop work order. Anyone second this? Hod seconds it? All is in favor?
Roll call vote, please.
Do you have a discussion?
Well, all is in favor of-
Some discussion.
Of the approval, or, so we can talk about it.
Okay.
All those in favor, say yea?
No, seconded, it's on the table, now you have a discussion.
Okay, thank you. All right, it's only my second time, folks. Roberts rules orders are kind of tough.
So now what?
Okay, so.
I think we need to publicly discuss our reasons for, for, for this, and I-
Eric, you want to start?
I'd rather not go first.
I don't have a problem with construction being done, as long as it's done within our rules, and then it's approved by our building inspector. And, you know, I, I don't want to stop anybody from improving their building, so.
But this would not, he would, so, but there would be no certificate of occupancy. This would just mean-
That's the building inspector.
Just to complete.
That's not the building inspector.
What's to say they won't open it as a migrant?
Right.
Because we have, we have-
The variance to do it, what's to say they won't keep?
That's not the question before you, though.
No, it's-
I can't even hear what you said, actually.
If we, if we let them keep going, you know, let them keep finishing the building, what's to say they won't use it as the migrant camp anyway?
Would that be a violation?
I know, but, I know they need to, I know they need to finish it so they could use it for something else, or sell it, or whatever. But what's to say they won't use it as, I know, either way.
Our city zoning laws, if we tell them that they can't use it, right?
I know, but, they've used it in the past, is what I'm saying.
Well, then, yep, I understand.
Let me say something. If, if, if the vote were to be to reverse the stop work order, if, if there were future violations, there's nothing to prevent another stop work order. I mean, it's not a carte blanche. You're looking at whether you, the decision that was made, whether they're going to be allowed, is it, whether they can be working is still subject to all the rules, I think you got to stand.
And can I ask Mel, would allowing, huh?
No, no, yeah, just, I wanted you guys to understand that it isn't just go do what you want, they're still subject to the rules, regardless of-
Inspection, so.
Yeah.
Improving a building is not a problem, but he can't have occupants in it, so I have a problem with improving a building.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask Mel, if he had to review this, because it was reviewed by the previous inspector, so.
Well, the fact, I'll start. The fact that a person is improving a building, I have no qualms about that, provide he followed procedure, and goes through the proper steps. To sit there and usurp, or to go roughshod over the existing codes and laws, I do have problems with. I have no problem with the man improving a piece of property. So that's not an issue to me. Does anyone else want to speak on that?
I said my piece, if you're looking at me, I can't tell.
Yeah, I got your, yeah.
Do you want to s-
No.
No? Hod, do you want to say anything?
No, I support, I support Mel.
Oh, yeah.
All right, no comments, Scott?
No comment.
No, no comment.
Got them.
All right, then we will take a vote. I make a motion-
Yeah, you did that.
To change-
To reverse the-
Reverse the stop work order.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor.
All right, so.
Just need a vote.
Need a vote.
Mazur?
You want to reverse it?
Yes.
Powers?
No.
No. Schneider?
Yes.
Brewster?
Yes.
Garber? Yes. Henley? Okay, so we have six yes and one no.
And one vacant.
Motion passed.
Motion passed.
No, wait, you have to have five and one.
Can't be six and one.
Five. Y'all got six people.
That was five in favor, correct?
Five to one, yeah.
Yeah.
Motion, Gary?
So it passes. Okay, comments from the commissioners, anybody?
We have to set the, set the minute, I'm going to, we have to set the meeting date to approve these minutes.
Okay, I don't know how we do that, when do we do that?
I know there was a letter in here from Amber that indicated that-
Hey, we need order back there. It's hard enough to hear.
The sooner the-
Keep it down.
That the sooner the better, that the soon, that she wants the meeting within a week.
Okay, what, what night are you guys available that we can meet with Amber?
At council.
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
It'll just be in the council, yeah.
Tuesday's fine, with Tuesday.
I make a motion that we schedule a meeting for next Tuesday at same time as today.
Yeah, that's fine.
6:30?
And to approve the minutes.
To approve minutes.
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, next Tuesday, that would be, what would that be? It's 20 something, 26? Yeah, the 26. At 6:30 at the city offices.
What's in this, Mazur?
All in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? See at the city office.
Okay, now, what did you want to do here?
I think everyone's made their comments, or does anyone wish to speak?
No, this is for the commissioners.
Is this for us?
Start with common and work your way down.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Nothing for me.
I believe we disclosed everything that we're feeling, and counsel's not here anymore, so I think we made the right decision. Hod?
Oh, I'm positive.
Positive, okay. Mr. Booster?
Nothing to add.
All right, Eric?
I have nothing to say. Motion to adjourn.
Motion accepted, I second it. Thank you, everybody.